I used to read this excerpt to my students. And I'd leave out a word, and then I'd have them guess what the word was. I'm not gonna do that today, I'm just gonna read it, okay? It's called "Attitude." "The longer I live, the more I realize the impact of attitude on my life. To me, it is more important than the facts, than education, than money, than circumstances, than failures, than successes, than what other people think, or say, or do. It is more important than appearance, giftedness, or skill. It will make or break a company, a church, a home. The remarkable thing is, we have a choice every day regarding the attitude we will embrace for that day. We cannot change our past. We cannot change the fact that people will act in a certain way. We cannot change the inevitable. The only thing we can do is play on the string we have, and that is our attitude. I'm convinced that life is ten percent what happens to me, and ninety percent how I react to it. And so it is with you. We are in charge of our attitude." I stand for pleasure.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In most of you would adopt the agenda as represented by the superintendent.
With approval.
Second.
This move by Ms. Price and Mrs. Kennedy to adopt the agenda as represented by the superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, here's four zero. Next, we have citizen comments, and as we have one time, we have any such advice in common law. First, we have Doug Galaxian.
First of all, thank you for... Alright, first of all, thank you so much for having me, I appreciate that. Being a Citrus High School graduate, and citizen of Citrus County, and I just felt that I wanted to come in and just say something. I know you guys have some tough issues with budgets, and, you know, cutbacks from the state and everything. I know it's a tough time, but I just feel that, I know you guys have a lot of authority and power, but just don't make quick decisions, because I look at Citrus County, and look at some of your buildings, and I know that some of your buildings really need upkeep. I know that your buses probably gonna need upkeep, and, you know, when we're talking about spending money, we really gotta sit down and count the costs, and sometimes I think that if we can look to the community, get the community input, and see how they feel about it. I know that I'm very active in what's going on in the community. That's my heart of this community. So I'm asking you to really, you know, let's see if we can, if you don't have money, basically you can ask to go put on the ballot, and see if these guys can give you some more money. I say that we are funding a lot of events, a lot of different things throughout Citrus County. I think the school board and schools is one of the greatest things, a great investment when we're dealing with kids. You gotta do a great job. We have A-plus schools, I believe we can put a little investment in, put in some funding, or whatever you have to do. I know you got capital fund, I'm just looking at some of you guys, things that you need, and I know that if we don't fix our problem now, then down the line, we're gonna end up paying more money trying to repay our buildings. I know I got more than one minute, but I looked at my house this morning, I was telling my wife last night, I said, "Look, we got a beautiful house, but things will start breaking apart." If we don't fix those things now, what's gonna happen is we're gonna pay more money down the line. So basically, what do we do? We go ahead and try to fix the things that we have now, and then we worry about tomorrow, when it gets there. So I'm asking you guys to please consider, if you're nothing else, ask the citizen in Citrus County. Put it on the ballot, see if we can vote, and see if we get some additional funding, that's maybe coming from the county or the state. That's pretty much all I have, and I'm just glad to be here and to be a part of this. Thank you so much.
I love you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Terri Brooks. Good morning.
I'm Terri Brooks, a Citrus County girl. I was raised in Crystal River, and I'm a product of the Citrus County school system. I graduated from Florida Southern College, but I came back home, back home, to live, raise my family, and teach. My father, Ralph Brooks, was a school board member for two terms. He was also a county commissioner for three terms. My mother, Betty Brooks Brown, taught in the county for over thirty years. I recently retired after thirty-four years. And my son, Jason Worsham, is a teacher at La Canto High School. As you can see, education has been important to my family. We have dedicated our lives to it. Knowledge is power. Our school system has been dealt a bad hand, not only from the economy, the downturn in that economy, the state of Florida has not been very helpful, and sadly, most sadly, by our own Citrus County Commission in relation to the impact fees. Something must be done. We as educators have one of the best school systems in the state of Florida. That brings people to our county. We must ensure that it continues to be the best. We as educators need to become involved, and we need to become vocal. We need to support the additional sales tax for education, and we must also call for the reinstatement of our impact fees. The Citrus County Commission should not have control of the impact fees for our Citrus County schools. I challenge us all to become involved, to become vocal, and push for these two things, the sales tax and the reinstatement of the impact fees. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Bynes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I didn't do my homework last night, I was asked to, maybe I could have something to say, and lord knows, I've always had plenty to say. So I figured I'd just shoot from the heads. Education is like Terri, I mean, I put my thirty years into this system, and it really meant a lot, and it changed over the years. You know, in this place, in 1976, pretty rural, and then look at us now, I mean, you know, I don't have to drive to a Cali or McDonald's, which is amazing, you know? But, you know, we were always fighting for money. It seemed like, you just take each decade, and it was always a shortage of money. Back when teachers, I mean, we would give $200 a year raise, or $250, or $300 a year raise. I remember that. It wasn't until the nineties where I started to seize and fall, a little bit of climb. And it's not just about the teachers, but I really think they're important, they're an integral part, if you really are gonna have the future developed. You know, you gotta have a pillar in the community, and we are supposed to be it. And what happened is, we got ourselves politically correct over the years, we lost the vision of fight. And I know I fought a little bit, you know? I always had something to say. But the bottom line is, my heart was very, very set in what is good. The question is, I define good different from other people, but the bottom line is, we have to start fighting again. You know, every time I read, and I'm a hundred percent for, you know, you can make it one percent, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you can make it two percent. I believe that you need to put money back in, and you're gonna get more out. You know, people don't work for nothing. You know, you gotta understand that we're not, we're not in missionary, we're not doing missionary work, even though we did a lot of missionary work. There's a point where we have to, you know, walk the walk, and not just walk the walk. So here's just an idea. It's very, very hard to get out into the community and get people to listen to you. We need to be more vocal. You understand charter school is one step away from taking more funds. And public education, we're sitting there in a cushy thing, thinking it's all good. It's not, it's falling apart. It's falling apart, and they're taking money away, and think you aren't doing a good job. They have this accountability that's unrealistic. We've always performed super well, I remember from years ago to now. We've been a great community, yet you could never see the praise that came here. You know, we did it now because there's this, you know, we have these forums and everything, it's all proper now. We did a great job years ago. We're doing a great job now. Why are we fighting so hard? I wish it wasn't three minutes, 'cause that's why I said I don't need a ready-to-get-down. My cousin, all my cousins are up in New York. They're all in education. And the bottom line is that they, you know, we were talking one day, and she has a house, a three-bedroom, two-bath house, just like me, very modest, and you know what? She pays $12,000 in taxes. See, in the suburbs, not New York City, this is upstate, same house. And here we are, my taxes are nothing. And people complain about the taxes here, it's ridiculous. You go from $12,000 less to $1,000, and you wanna, even have, you even think you wanna say something? So we need to get out, and I would like to see if it can be organized with this system, where you say, okay, send out teams. You know, we've sent you up to speak to certain communities, and, you know, where there's old people involved, because you know, we gotta talk to the old people. We can't just put it in the paper, we gotta get in front of them, let them read them. And you gotta start to say, so we could have representation from administration, you can have teachers, various retired people, we have retired, you know, because you guys working your tail off, and I get it. But we gotta start doing something, because we're gonna lose what we have. And so one percent, half percent, one percent, I wanna say one percent. A half percent is nothing, but it's where you have to start. You have to start, and then you have to teach, because people need to get educated, and you need to put in front, and they might not, and they wanna smack you in the face, maybe. And you take the hit. But let me tell you what's going on, because if we're trying to be a pillar of the community, you gotta put a little concrete in, it's all, okay? It's not just salt. You gotta stiffen it, you gotta make it better. And if you wanna be part of this community, which has been fantastic over the years, we proved ourselves, then you need to start to say, what can, how can we help you? So, we're going at it, we need to be a little more aggressive, we need to be a little bit more presentation and polished, when it comes to, look, if everybody's speaking from different levels or different angles, and you just said, "Look, you don't have a clue what's going on." And, again, I need thirty minutes, but I'll talk, because I think I wanna go three minutes. Oh yeah, I do have a watch on now. So anyways.
Thanks very much.
Ever wanna hear a thirty-minute version, let me know.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
You need to give money.
Thank you.
Chris Lloyd.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Unaccustomed as I am to speaking.
You're normally not at this meeting, though.
I'll break, that's fine. I'll break a rule and speak here instead of the county commissioner, though in fact, I'll be speaking with that today, I mean, probably not quite as nicely. I have a million dollar, I'm here, by the way, to support or thrust for our sales tax. I'm a commissioner. But I have a million dollar question. If the answer to this question is no, I sit there. Do you require a formal vote of authorization from all the county commissioners to put this on?
No.
Absolutely sure.
Absolutely.
Because, had the answer been yes, the commissioners have to okay it, I would say to you, my professional advice is don't even bother trying, because, no seriously, because money will apply to it.
It has to go in front of the board of county commissioners, but it's a pass-through.
Yeah.
For them to plan to the ballot.
Good with me if you give them a framed copy.
It's more, it's just a pass-through.
I understand. It's very important. Yes, I do have some experience at Citrus County government, but I was also a director of the county department of science for about five years, so that's a lot, it's forced to be. So, we'll assume, we hope, that you get a vote that says yes, you wanna go ahead with the sale. If you do, and I agree with the, many of the comments made by the last gentleman, if you decide you wanna go ahead, you'd better start working. School district, the school district people have great lives. I know many of them, many of you. They're not very good at blowing their trumpet. You wanna go out, you wanna ask the public for money, you're gonna play your trumpet loud. So what do I mean, ladies? I mean that. Assume that go ahead, it's on the ballot, you gotta go out, you gotta talk to any community groups that you can find. As you know, I'm a fairly prominent member of the organization, the Citrus County Council. We represent several hundred homeowners. We haven't obviously had a chance to debate a particular topic, but I can tell you, broadly speaking, we are always supportive of schools and municipal debt. But really, you need to like, talk to everyone. Stop people as they goes through the drive-thru of dollars. Preach to them, yeah? Talk to folks who you may meet, if you're at church or something.
Chris is on the line, we're about to run out of time.
Well, I look like I'm running out of time. He talked for twenty-five minutes.
The lights weren't on, but...
I have the lights up anyway, because I have another one. So, I lost my watch there from the...
Sorry.
Really got to treat this as a marketing campaign, because that's what it is. And if you don't market it, that means getting a primary court to give you plenty of coverage. All of you need to write guest columns to them. Don't market this.
Thanks very much, Chris. And Lynn, we'll turn on the light, Chris was right, we forgot to turn it on, and one person said, "We'll turn on the light," but we only had three minutes.
Oh, I'm gonna get limited now.
No. Everyone has already been saying one time, I forgot.
I'm turkey, you're chain. Like Chris, I am oftentimes unaccustomed to speaking in public, though when I feel very passionate about something, I am going to speak my mind. As the son of a teacher, and as a teacher myself, we have been fighting this money battle since the day I was born, and probably well before that time. We need to fix it. Many of us in the audience are for the tax increase, but we hate like heck to be an ATM every time we turn around. We have two fundamental problems here in Citrus County. One is, the school board is a stakeholder without a voice in how it is funded through the impact fee. We have several members of the audience who are BOCC candidates, who I think we need to find out how we can fix this problem. The sitting BOCC members, as well as all candidates, should address how the school board can be left as the tail that is being wagged by the BOCC dog in funding for capital projects. The second thing, and I've been an advocate for economic development for quite some time, is that we have a terrible disconnect in this county between the BOCC, the EDA, and other members who should be active in attracting businesses to grow this county, where we can have a better tax base. We cannot rely simply on tourism, and hotels, and restaurants for our tax base. We need industry, we need to be able to grow this county, so we have good jobs, where we can keep the best and brightest students for our benefit, not export them to somewhere else. We need to get our act together, and the only way we're going to do that is if we take a progressive look and plan to get ahead, not to cut back. We have too many people who are looking at shrinking a budget, where it benefits nobody except a very few. Let's get our act together, people. Let's make Citrus County great, and let's stop bickering about what we have to do to get there. Let's move. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope.
Yes.
As a quick postscript, I am happy to report, I am cancer-free.
Next, we have Kate Bettsko.
That's good.
Carrie, did you put on a green card? I don't have one.
No, I would have, if I'd have got to it in time.
Oh, you still have time, yes. Okay. Lynn, do it.
Thank you, ma'am. How was your commute on Monday?
Just a little bit.
Can I take his other forty-two?
I'm just kidding. I'm Kate Bettsko, I am the president of the League of Voters of Citrus County. I'm gonna keep my league hat on for a moment, and I'd like to invite, Harry, two people that you would propose, someone who is for this, and some person who is against it, and we would be happy to sponsor a debate, and, for the school district, and I hope you'll take us up on that, on that proposal. Now I'm gonna take my school board, my league hat off, and say, as a citizen of Citrus County, I am very proud to live here, I'm very proud to be part of this community, and very proud of the school board. You've been incredible. One of my little notes here is, last week I had the privilege of visiting La Canto Primary School. If you have not been there, I know you have, but people here, if you have not seen that school, and how hard those teachers and the students are so excited about learning. But how they can be excited is only a commitment from the teachers that make it so, because that school is the most depressing place I've seen as far as a school in a long time. That needs to be upgraded. I haven't had an opportunity to see the other schools that we're discussing improving, but I'm sure that they're in the typical state as La Canto Primary. This is disastrous for our kids, and I think we need to do that. That's why I'm speaking, of course, in favor of the percent tax increase. I took note of Thomas Kennedy's article in the column in the paper, an excellent explanation. And to tell you the truth, I'm a very good protester, or I'm a very good person to carry signs and support our schools, and just tell me where and when, I even make my own sign, and I will be there. Because I agree with Chris, and that we do need to have vocal support of our school district, and vocal support of us. Hadn't been for the delay, or the suspension of our impact fees, that probably would've been fine, it probably would've helped a lot for you to be able to do what you need to do for our school district. So, and as you know, I went before the commission and told them how wrong they were to take currency away from the school district, and they ended up voting for continuing it. But if you don't have any money, it's not really, but at least, you know, we need to get that agreement in place. So, thank you for letting me speak, and I do have my business card, I can give it to Lynn.
Please.
And, thank you, and good luck.
I thank you.
Call me if you need me to.
Yes. Thank you. Tara Donnelly.
Hello, my name's Tara Williams Donnelly. I was born in Orlando, but we, I grew up in Crystal River, and went through Crystal River Primary, part of La Canto Primary, and then Crystal River Middle, and high school. And then went to University of Florida, and got my degree in speech pathology, and my bachelor's, excuse me, bachelor's, I'm a little nervous, I don't like getting up, speaking with a crowd of people. But I came back, or after UF, I went and I worked in Hillsborough County and Orange County Schools to do speech therapy. And I come from a family of educators. My grandmother was, I believe, the first woman on the school board years ago. And I, my mom was a teacher, my aunts are teachers, I have teachers all in my family. But my husband and I moved back here to start a business, and we've been here for eight years, and I'm one of the few that comes back and starts a business. But we have two boys that are in public school, one is at the spring elementary, one is at the spring middle. And I just, I think that those schools are very good, and this is a great county, we have lots of, lots of great things to offer. Mr. Bynes was one of my science teachers years ago. But there's so much here that we have to offer, and we're one of the few counties that has arts, and that has, you know, music and art, and there are people that want to come to Citrus County, because other counties don't offer what we do. And it would be shame to see any of that go away. I'm in favor of the half-cent sales tax on the ballot, and I really hope that we can have these reinstated, because that is something that is a shame, and we're waiting for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you. This probably is not going to be one of my favorite conversations. We've lived here, and as Senator Lynn will know, we moved here from Tampa, my name's Terry Cooper for the record. We moved here from Tampa when our son was two years old. These so-called experts down there said he was too retarded to ever do anything, he'd never tie his shoes, be potty-trained or anything. He came through this educational system, then to Crest, and then to Key, and as you guys know, you know my son, he functions like everybody else. Every Monday, he works at the hospital, today he's working at the thrift store, and I lay that all on the education he got here. God pointed us here, and it's paid off. My daughter, just turned twenty-five, she was editor-in-chief of the La Canto paper, and then editor-in-chief of her undergrad newspaper. She's right now in the middle of her master's program with straight A's. I lay that all with you guys. You've done a great job. However, if you saw the Chronicle last week, Thursday, I had a letter in there saying, "We are not the ATM." There've been some questionable things along the way, not to be laid at your doorstep. We lost $750,000 seven years, eight years ago, because we outsourced something to a consultant. He brought in $750,000 that belonged to this school department, and put it in his pocket. Lack of oversight there. My phone started ringing about an hour after that newspaper hit. Don't take this as any insult, because it's not directed at anybody, but I was told by several teachers, whether this is accurate or not, it is their perception. They were upset that the school administration, or whatever you call it, donated a bunch of money for the swimming pool at the Y. They said a million bucks, whatever it was. No, I know, I've had a long conversation with Sam Himmel, and back and forth with Mike Arnold, et cetera, and I'm gonna, supposed to be with Sam in a couple days. And the perception, like I'm saying, maybe it's true, maybe it's not true, the perception is that this was Mr. Kennedy's program, so Mr. Kennedy's son would have a swimming pool. Maybe right, maybe wrong, but that's... Maybe right, maybe wrong, but that's the perception. And try to overcome the perception. Some people think Barack Obama's a great guy, try to overcome that. And I got a phone call from one of our elected officials. No, I'm sorry, I bumped into that elected official at the opening of the Y, which is an incredible place, incidentally. And that person says, hey, this tax increase is wrong, and we're gonna talk about it. So we've had a lot of people praise us, and you guys are doing a great job, no question about it. You're doing a great job at the education. Doing the job of managing the money sometimes is a little questionable, and we can't, we taxpayers can't be held as an ATM. Now, the impact fees, I don't know anything about that, we paid ours when we moved here. I've never been anyplace in the world where they've had impact fees.
About thirty seconds.
Say again?
About thirty seconds.
Thank you. So, I'd like a brand new Lamborghini, I can't afford one, and if I had a bunch of people to go to that had money, okay, I'd have a new Lamborghini, but I don't. You guys have to live within your budget, whether you like it or not, whether you formed the budget or not, whether you wasted the money in the past or not, somebody wasted it. We taxpayers should not be on the hook for that. You guys get paid a lot of money, because I've never seen any school board get paid except in Florida. Thanks for listening to me, I just wanna let you know, it's not necessarily only my comments, it's also the perception. You have to fight the perception.
Thanks very much, Mr. Cooper, appreciate it.
I wish I didn't.
Not at all, because you always say something that inspires people to pay more and to go out and tell people some information they might not have, so I really appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I would like to respond, because there was my son's situation brought up. Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
My son goes to Crystal River High School. He swims at the bicentennial pool, has since the age of five, will continue to do so, as he has, which is a Board of County Commission pool.
Don't give the messenger, I'm just telling you what I'm saying.
I'm stating this for the record, so this is very clear, because I am offended that someone would bring my children and saying that there's an ethical issue here, when in particular, we were talking about, not a million dollars, there was a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar investment this district did for a twenty-five year use of the YMCA pool for the high school competitions.
I'm aware of that.
In addition, there is a twenty-five year agreement for the YMCA to take over our swim safety program for all of the elementary students that will be coming into the school system. That is saving this district a substantial amount of money over the next twenty-five years. This was not about a swimming pool access. And to say that, sir, it's really just, it's re-expressing rhetoric that is inaccurate. And so purely by stating it publicly, you are sharing inaccuracies in the sense that is shocking that you would do that in a personal way. I will tell you, if you don't know, my wife actually taught your daughter, she had a very positive experience with your daughter and with you.
My daughter would agree.
And I would never, in my life, share inaccurate information publicly, when that's just plainly wrong. It is absolutely wrong, it is absolutely inaccurate. And I have to say, I was not a board member when the E-rate situation happened. This school district was stolen of that money.
Three quarters of a million.
A man went to jail for that. And we actually were able to, because of state laws, were not being able to recoup that, even though it was proven that there was fraud by this individual. So again, this isn't mismanagement of funds, this is absolutely about being stolen of funds. So I am very concerned that when misinformation is shared without the accuracy of understanding that. So I just hope that that record has been straightened. For those, again, that need to know, my son is actually part of the bicentennial Suncos Swim Team, does not swim at the YMCA, and I am not a member of the YMCA. So I hope that that record is now straight and clear.
Are you all done?
I don't, sir, but I actually am here, sir.
Could I ask both of you if you want to discuss this further on a personal basis?
Absolutely, but I believe that that...
You're trying to have people come and...
Oh, no, we appreciate it.
I didn't say these things were true, I prefaced, and I closed by saying, this is the perception you're betting people have to deal with.
But Mr. Cooper, what you're saying is that when you voiced it, and maybe people listening to it thought that there was some truth to it, which we all of us know.
Except Sam Himmel asked me to hold off until I came to this meeting.
Yeah, and what...
And if it was in the Chronicle, it would've again been more inaccuracies. Had you discussed it with me, had somebody contacted me?
Let me again ask both of you, if you will, after the meeting, if you want to discuss something on a personal, to do so.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
You got, whoop me up in a phone book, I'm not gonna be here when this meeting's over at four o'clock or whatever.
We work here, or sometimes it is longer, but it won't be that long.
You guys get paid to be here, I don't.
We'd be here without.
It wouldn't be as much fun, though.
Melissa Westfall.
I have a whole different speech prepared, so we're just gonna set that aside for a moment. I'm Melissa Westfall, I'm just a mom, I don't have the history that some of our people here have, but I am a graduate of Crystal River High School, go parents, and my children are in the school system now. It's a funny thing, when I get fired up, I have a reputation of praying out loud before I speak, because I tend to spat, and I really thought I was coming up here prayer-free, but it turns out I'm not, so I just wanna pray over this room right now, and just say, Lord, please let the words that come out of my mouth, let them please be productive and positive, Lord, and all in your name we pray. Mr. Cooper, wow. As a fellow parent of special needs child going through this school system, I am appalled that no matter what these people could do professionally, academically, or personally, that, and I do want to tell you, I have my time to speak, so please don't interrupt.
I'm not interrupting.
There is nothing that the people in this room could ever do that would make me speak so disrespectfully after the way that they have treated my children. My daughter, her file actually reads miraculous because of her progress, she's on the autism spectrum. And, oh my gosh, I'm so fired up, thank you, Lord. I don't even know where to start. First of all, let me start by saying that this pool that you referred to, without having adequate information, the thing that they did through the Y is saving over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, let me say it again, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over twenty-five years by them going into this program. And I honestly, if I had been a part of that, or my kid was on the swim team and that took place, I'd probably fin and just jump on board and say, I did have something to do with that, because the amount of money that is saving our school system is amazing, it's absolutely amazing. But something that I think is also important for you, you seem to have a reputation as far as speaking in front of people, your integrity is lost when you're unprofessional. And what you're saying here is not being discounted, please don't, please don't be offended, I want you to understand what I'm saying. No, no, please.
Yes, I offended because you're claiming that these comments were mine.
Yeah, just a moment, this forum is for speaker at the podium to speak, and not for dialogue between people, so if you would, both of you address that, I appreciate it.
My point being, you can tell people that they stink at what they do, and that they have a horrible reputation, but you can do it with class, and there is certainly no need to bring gossip, or I heard someone say, into a professional forum. We have been given this opportunity to present our opinions on this going on the ballot or not, and I think it should stick to that. I want to now focus on the board and say, thank you guys for the opportunity to stand here, for the opportunity for my children to have gone through the school. People relocate to this area, like other people have spoken, and I just wanna say ditto also to everything that they already said, because I don't have time to repeat it. But something that really strikes me, certainly hard, happened a few weeks ago, I was in a city council meeting in Crystal River, standing room only, a group of passionate people wanting to talk about a particular subject, and I wish this room was full right now, of both the for and against, because we want to hear both sides. Maybe we are missing, Mr. Cooper, so we certainly don't, we're not saying we don't want to hear your opinion, we just want to hear it maybe versed a little more professionally. So anyway, at the City of Crystal River meeting, it was standing room only, there's people of all ages standing in the room, and I turned to a gentleman who was handing the media behind me, and I said, sir, do you think maybe we can find some more chairs, you know, maybe you can help me, I'll help you carry them? And he looked me square in the eyes and said, it's not my job. Well, I was on another forum that night, had another passionate issue, so I spoke to him, you know.
About thirty seconds.
Thank you. So I think what it boils down to here, and that just struck me so hard, it's not my job, it is our job, as citizens, as parents, as homeowners, as purchasers, as people getting a paycheck, it is our job to support the school system, it is totally our job, just like someone spoke earlier, to take care of things when they're falling apart. I just think that this is not an ATM, this is investing in something that gives back to our future. I would certainly like to think you would like educated people making decisions on your retirement, on your social security, and we're raising those kids through our school system now. If you do appear to be a person that doesn't find a lot of light and a great situation, so I just ask you to please choose the words carefully that you use for the rest of this, and just speak respectfully, please. But I want to thank you guys so much, and it is a no-brainer, guys, this has to go on the ballot, and you have a roomful of people who are gonna work for you and do everything we can to make it pass.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Mr. Alexander, you wanted to have your couple questions? We're timing you.
All right, thank you. Well, you know, I'm a preacher, so I always have to do the benediction, so, and I appreciate her coming and praying, I prayed before I came here this morning. I want to say, though, that the YMCA, I'm a board of directors, I'm the board of directors at the YMCA, your contribution to the YMCA is a partnership, and the YMCA stands behind their partnership, and so basically, you're gonna save millions of dollars by entering in that partnership with the YMCA, so, and if you're not a member of the YMCA, I'm saying everybody, it's a great facility, go up and join, and we got some good rates for you, and it would be a blessing to you just to be a part of the YMCA. Now, the next thing, I did leave out a few things. Reduced funding and the capital fund resulting in a loss of, I'm talking about millions of dollars in the last five years, already, I did a little bit of research. We gotta maintain our buildings, and we gotta maintain our vehicles, everything that you have. You have twenty-five million dollars in maintenance needed over your buildings for the next five years, that's a lot of money, so you guys gotta think about that, that's a lot of money this needs. Capital funding, without this additional revenue, the district will have the means to keep up the major maintenance projects and renovations, you guys need a lot of money. I want to say this, that, in my closing, that taxpayers, they trust you guys with your most valuable possession, that is our children and our family. They expect you to keep it safe and keep them in good environment. Additional revenue will keep the reality in Citrus County. Citrus County is one of the best places, I've traveled around the world, I can tell you, as a military twenty-year veteran, and came back here because this is the place I want to be, and this is the place I want to invest in. You guys are doing a great job, you guys know, and listen, I pray for you, let's get this capital funding going, not only that, but also put it on the ballot. Listen, I go up there and fight for you, you know, other people decide here, listen, we gotta pray, we gotta come together, we really gotta be unified, and we can do this, let's do it for the future of our children. Thank you, I gotta go, but God bless y'all, just do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the School Support Services, Mr. Bishop. He's going to talk about capital out by the table. Would you all like a break? Okay. About five minutes, guys? You got to eight.
No, we haven't passed that one yet.
You did, entered it in front of you.
Two more new STEM Academy, one Brooksville, another one in Spring Hill, and I was there year to be a fifth of my consults.
She is. I know, I know.
A homicide, some one third grade, and a test.
I'm going to sit and be quiet.
Okay. This is how we bring cards in.
I didn't think it was quite right.
Yeah, that's awesome. Go homicide.
Yeah, give it a thumb.
Yeah, at the school, there's a little... Yeah, not in that building, it's all in the... Yes, it is.
Thanks, Melissa.
It's good to meet you.
Mr. Cooper, first name is Perry? I've seen a lot of his stuff.
I've seen stuff.
Sorry, can you remember? I'm a little bit...
We need a script with everyone saying the same thing. She gets a copy of it.
Suzie? As soon as I read the name, we're going to go to you. And we only have about seven minutes before that can start, so. We're ready to reconvene. Let's see, oh, there's Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, we're ready to reconvene, just for about five minutes. Let me have the administrative.
Okay. Good morning. My first request is to seek approval for the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Goldenrod. I do have an addition. I would like to add, under resignations for 2015-16, Sean Furness's name, and he will resign as of 5/31/2016. He has accepted an administrative position.
Okay. Do I motion? That's what we're looking at, more than just as a motion. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the instructional and support recommendations as presented on the Goldenrod.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve instructional and support recommendations as seen on the Goldenrod. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Here is 4-0. Thank you.
Next, I'm asking approval of Laura Manos to be named Assistant Director of Instructional Support for Teachers effective July 1, 2016.
Move approval? Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve Laura Manos, Coordinator of Instructional Support for Teachers, effective July 1, 2016. All in favor? Aye. Here is 4-0, thank you. Oppose then? Next.
I'm asking approval for Todd Goolsbee to be named Assistant Principal of Citrus High School, with the effective date of May 27, 2016.
I move that we approve Todd Goolsbee, Assistant Principal of Citrus High School, effective May 27, 2016.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve Todd Goolsbee, Assistant Principal of Citrus High School, effective May the 27, 2016. Can I third it? I guess I can.
Where's the chair? You can do much of the law.
Very excited that Todd is going to assume that decision. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Here is 4-0. Is Todd in the room?
He is outside.
Outside, right outside, okay.
Next, I'm asking approval for Lorraine Castleberry to be named Assistant Director at WTC, effective May 27, 2016.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Lorraine Castleberry as Assistant Director of Woodbridge Technical College, effective May 27, 2016.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve Lorraine Castleberry Assistant Director of Woodbridge Technical College, effective May the 27, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Yeah, here is 4-0. Were they slow?
Mine was for approval.
Next, I'm asking approval for Sean Furness to be named Assistant Principal at Rock Crusher Elementary School, effective June 1, 2016.
Move approval to approve Assistant Principal of Rock Crusher Elementary to be Sean Furness, effective date is, what was it?
June 1.
June 1, 2016.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve Sean Furness as Assistant Principal of Rock Crusher Elementary School, effective June 1, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here is, oppose? Here is 4-0. Thank you.
Next, I'm asking approval of Stephanie Gardner to be named Supervisor of Achievement Data Technology, effective June 1, 2016.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Stephanie Gardner, Supervisor of Achievement Data Technology, effective June 1, 2016.
It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, second by Mrs. Bryant, to approve Stephanie Gardner as Supervisor of Achievement Data Technology, effective June 1, 2016. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Here is 4-0. Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Thank you. Right on time. Okay, next, we're going to enter an administrative hearing, which, oh, I'm sorry, we're recessed this meeting, and then we'll go into administrative hearing. And the people in the audience have to go out.
Did they do their finance yet? They didn't do that, right?
No, they're going to do the capital.
Okay, after.